Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Muskogee Municipal Authority. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize somebody special. Mr. Justin Borgor. Twenty hard years.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't look like you're that old.
No, it's not.
A little bit about Officer Borgor. He began his career with the Muskogee Police Department in January of 2005. He was immediately assigned to patrol following his graduation from the Cleet Academy in March the same year. In 2009, he became a member of the Special Operations Team and successfully completed the Tulsa County Sheriff's Office SWAT Operator School. That same year, he completed the Advanced Sniper Course with Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office. In 2010, he attended the Glock, Colt, and Remington Training to become an Armorer tasked with the maintenance and repair of the department's many weapons systems. Later that same year, he became certified to instruct Cleet curriculum. In the summer of 2011, he completed the Cleet Firearms Instructor Course and became certified to instruct pistol, rifle, and shotgun training with the department and also at the Cleet Basic Academy. September of 2013, he became the department's Training Coordinator and began construction for the department's current firearms range facility. In December of 2013, he became a certified Taser Instructor. In 2014, he became a certified Active Shooter Response Trainer. In the same year, he attended the Law Enforcement Driver Training Course at Cleet and became a certified Driving Instructor. He completed a certification with Cleet to become an Academy Coordinator and successfully hosted a Cleet Basic Reserve Academy in Muskogee. In 2015, he successfully passed the Combat Shooting and Tactics, Tac Pistol, Tac Rifle Instructor Course hosted by Paul Howell of Texas. After completing the Firearms Range Construction Project in 2015, he hosted a full-time basic Cleet Academy in Muskogee, which was the first for the city in more than 30 years. In 2016, he returned to the Patrol Division and completed the Field Training Officer Program and began instructing newly hired officers with the department. Between 2016 and 2025, he attended numerous basic Cleet Academies, both Reserve and full-time classes, to instruct students around the state. He credits his success through a challenging and rewarding profession with three biggest blessings in his life: his wife Mallory, and the three daughters Caitlin, Alston, and Parker. That would be four biggest blessings. The way I count it. Chief, what are we going to do without this guy?
We obviously can't count.
Yeah, we're losing like 10 guys.
He'll be around.
Not at one time.
He'll know where to find him.
He's not going to be a consultant, is he? Thank you. Congratulations on your service. Let's look at this pretty plaque that we've got. I'm not going to pull it out because I'll get it greasy. Muskogee, the city of Muskogee honors Justin Borgor. Life is not measured so much by the quantity of days, but by their quality. Thank you for your years of service to the city of Muskogee. 8/30/2025.
Take it for a photo as well.
Oh, you're ambitious, though.
Yeah.
I wonder if you guys want to join as well?
Yeah.
Want to greet those ladies up here?
Something brilliant.
Right.
I said something brilliant, so it's a man.
Daniel, listen.
If everybody could squeeze in just a little bit.
Come on, squeeze in.
Everybody say happy retirement.
Happy retirement.
She's always so good.
Thank you, guys.
Good job. It's a special deal. I'd like to make a little announcement, a public service announcement. Put flyers on that table for anybody that would like them when they leave today. This is about fall prevention, falling down prevention, at the workplace, in public and at home. It's a worthy cause. The purpose of fall prevention is to reduce risk of falls and their associated injuries, thereby improving the safety and well-being of individuals. Falls can lead to serious consequences, including fractures, head injuries, and even death, especially among older adults. Adult fall prevention is promoted in September, with many organizations designated it as National Fall Prevention Awareness Month. This Awareness Month, which includes events like National Fall Prevention Awareness Day on September 22, highlights the risks of falls and offers tips for prevention, such as making home safety modifications and using appropriate assistive devices. Why is fall prevention important, you might ask? Falls are a major cause of injury-related fatalities and injuries among older adults, many falls occurring at home. While many associate falls with older age, they can happen to anyone at any time. A few little home safety tips: lighting, install night lights for bathroom trips in a maybe a light closer to bed. On the floors, remove or secure pro rugs with non-slip backing and clean up any spills immediately. Clutter: reroute or secure electrical cords and remove clutter from walkways. In the bathroom, install grab rails. In the shower and near the toilet, use a shower seat. In the kitchen and store, frequently use items that weigh tight and never use a chair as a step stool. Personal safety and medical awarenesses: ensure cans, walkers, and other devices are the correct size and properly maintained. Wear low-heeled, non-skid shoes and avoid walking in soft floor slippers and smooth towels. Be aware that some medications and combining them can increase fall risk. Consider a smartwatch or other device that can detect a fall and alert help. Who else can help? Medical professionals, doctors, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and provide guidance on assistive devices and exercises. And there's many community programs, many local organizations and extension offices offer programs like Tai Chi or arthritis and programs on maintaining balance. So let's all remember Fall Prevention Month. Thank you.
Dear Lord, once again, we just come thanking you for the gift of another day. Ask that you just bless our community, the Kipon, our community, the students in the community, yes, they are now back in school, that they have a successful and safe school year. Ask that you would come through this City Council meeting tonight, bless our hearts and our minds, that we would do all this in your will and in your way. These are many other blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Flag salute, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll do the Oklahoma salute.
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It sends peace to all peoples.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hooz.
Here.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here. Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of July 28, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending July 31, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have the claims for the month ending July 31, 2025. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff does recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting will now be adjourned, and we'll move on to the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hooz.
Here.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here. Okay, item number one.
Consider approval of MRA minutes of special call session July 14, 2025, and regular session July 28, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting will now be adjourned. Okay, next on our agenda is Muskogee City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hooz.
Here.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here. Okay, approval of minutes: City Council's special call session July 14, 2025, and regular session July 28, 2025, or take other necessary action. Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Consent agenda, items number one through eight. If everybody has reviewed items number one through eight, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. The regular agenda, item number nine, please.
Consider approval of claims for all city departments from July 5, 2025, through August 1, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we did not have a meeting because we did not have a quorum. We'll just table this item.
I have a comment about it, sir.
Yes, we do.
If we're ten minutes, she'll have to speak at the next, so we need to table it to the next meeting, to the date of service, and then she'll speak at that meeting.
And do we have a next meeting date now? Ms. Brazil, we're not speaking to that item tonight, but at our next meeting, where we speak to that item, we'd then like you to come and speak to that item as well.
When will you be speaking about it?
Possibly at special call on September 8.
Possibly on September 8 at a special call meeting.
Okay, so can I just make a general public comment, babe?
No, without signing up 15 minutes ahead of time.
Yeah.
She signed up for it. What time did she sign up for?
This one. I think that would be okay.
Yeah.
Okay, when we do those general items, we'd love for you to come up. Make a motion. We table this item to September 8. Second. We have a motion and a second on tabling this item. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number 10, please.
Receive presentation of the financial audit for the City of Muskogee Foundation for year 2024-2025, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Nancy Gaden here tonight, accountant for the community foundation, to give a presentation.
Yes, nice to be here. I know most of you, but.
Welcome.
I will make it brief. I wanted to talk about the two items that you received. First, I'll talk about our SAS 114 letter. So the City of Muskogee Foundation, we completed our audit for the year ending June 30 of 2025. We did not have any disagreements with our auditors. They did not have any adjusting journal entries to the numbers that we already presented at our board meetings. And so that's just two pages of a blurry way to say that. And then I'm going to move on to our audit report. And so we received an unqualified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that you can get for your financial statements. And so we received a clean audit. There were not any material deficiencies and/or internal control deficiencies. So that's what the first two pages of your report tell you. I will briefly summarize our financials for the year ending June 30 of 2025. We ended the year with $156.6 million worth of assets. We had total liabilities of $26.5 million and net assets of $130,128,760. Our statement of activities for that same period of time, we had total revenue of $15,796,472. We approved grants last year of over $19 million, and one of which, one of the bigger ones, was to the city for continued road improvements. That was $4 million, and that will be given to $500,000 a year, starting in 2026 through 2033. So we issued a lot of grants in 2025 for this community. So we had total expenses of $20,467,071, which led us to have an operating loss of $4,670,000 for the year. Most of the things that we do and most of our expenses are for the programs that we do. So of our $20.4 million worth of expenses, 19.6 of those were for program, and only $780,000 were for management and administration of the foundation. Cash flow, we started the year with $7,566,648 and ended with $6,589. That is, they segregate our investments of 150-something million between true cash and what's invested in marketable securities and things like that. So our cash decreased almost $1 million from prior year. And then I will not bore you with all of the different notes to the financial statements, but I encourage you to read any of those if you want to know more about the foundation. And those can be seen on pages eight through 14, but it just tells you about our specific accounting policies that we have. And so we just finished the year. We have our audit put to rest, and we're off and running with the new year. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, your audit today, they were very, very thorough.
Very.
So, good job there. I've got a question, and you've said the number, but I want to hear it again. But basically, how much money does the foundation have invested right now?
We're always somewhere around $150 million. I will say in the month of July, that's our big cash month. We pay most of our grants. We approve the bulk of our grants at our June meeting each year. And so I can tell you that I just read you the numbers as of June 30 of 2025, but we paid $6.6 million out of the foundation in one month, and we made the final road payment for the previous grant. That was a big one for $2 million to the city. And most of the grants that we approve at our June meeting are paid, turned around and paid in that new fiscal year. We paid off a loan that we had. We've paid off another one since then. And so, big cash month, but we plan for that. And again, you never know what the market's going to do, but we always have somewhere around $150 million.
And particularly, was a particular heavy year this June or July.
Yes.
But great, great, great job.
Yeah. Well, just wanted you to know, and we're always here, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody?
I moved for approval. The auditor gave the report today on the foundation meeting, and like Nancy said, everything was very thorough and everything. So, great job. Thank you, guys.
Do we have a second? A second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 11.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Resolution Number 3039 for the adoption of the City of Muskogee Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map Update, with the provision for the plan to be revised and updated as needed, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we'll now consider ourselves in an open public hearing. Ms. Sarah Winkle.
Yes, so I do have a PowerPoint for this. This is what I presented to you guys at the Public Works hearing. I know that a few weeks ago, we did have council luncheons in regard to this as well, and half came down and went through it more extensively to go over the documentation, just to show you what's coming with the Comprehensive Plan. We're really excited about it. We're excited about what it's going to offer Muskogee. But just to give you some more insight into that. Sorry, my apologies. There we go. So the Comprehensive Plan is going to outline our community vision. It's going to provide guidance for our future growth and development, and it's also going to give us a framework for all of our decision-making in the future. This is a 20-year plan, but it is encouraged that this plan is going to be looked at again, updated, and revisited at five years and at the 10-year mark. So that is something that I want everybody to be aware of. This isn't something where it's one and done. We do encourage it to be looked at again. We do encourage ideas, or if we see that something's not working, we can go in and change that and fix that. I don't know if the clicker's not working again. I apologize. I would like to let you guys know that we are having a launch party for the community, okay, on September the 4th. It's from 5 to 8 p.m. at the MLK Center. We have invited the community. There will be food. There will be giveaways. And there will also be, it's a chance for us to really go through it in depth with the community more and just to launch it and let them know about it. We did have different community outreach efforts throughout it to get the community involved and to get their opinions and their ideas, as far as what that they wanted to see come to Muskogee, what that they thought Muskogee was in need of. And we took those into account when we were in the process of developing this Comprehensive Plan. I'm not going to go through it all completely again, but the policy plan themes and everything else do line up with what we have been doing. It's not working. There you go. I also would like to answer, Counselor Stout, you had asked me a question at the Public Works meeting in regard to page 76, and I apologize that I did not have the information on hand with me to answer you, but I would like to let you know that I did go back and research that for you. And it does talk about the potentials of the benefits to annexing. However, it doesn't state that this is something that we are going to further pursue within the residential aspects of things. It does specifically state that within the municipal boundaries of Muskogee, the future development plan doesn't encourage annexation for the infill, but it does recommend infill development. And we are looking into a lot of different housing infill development for those areas. So I just wanted to answer that for you and let you know that we did look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And staff does recommend approval for the Comprehensive Plan, and I can take any questions that you may have.
Move for approval as presented. And I'm sorry. Tom, yeah, no one signed up to speak. Let's close the hearing now.
Oh, I'm here. I was talking to your committee out there.
Your name, please.
Nina Brown. She can walk up.
She's signed up as a general.
Okay. We, yeah, but we've got you on a general item, not an agenda item, so you can speak when everybody else speaks. Yeah.
All right, I'll just grab my seat.
I think she's going to speak on what she signed up for.
Okay. Okay.
Close it, see if council has anything.
Yeah. The meeting is now closed. Any questions or comments from council? We do have a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooz.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Number 12, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of the preliminary and final plat for the Harris Village subdivision located on East Harris Road, consisting of 2.316 acres to the City of Muskogee City Council, or take other necessary action.
We are now in an open public hearing. Ms. Winkle.
Yes, good evening. This is in regard to the plat that we are doing, the preliminary plat for the Harris subdivision, which is located off of East Harris Road in the Country Club area, and it's just east of York Street. We did present this proposed development at Public Works. It is going to provide new housing options for individuals and families wishing to retire within the city of Muskogee. within the City of Muskogee. These housing options will be a maximum of two and a half stories or 35 feet, with the average dwelling size being approximately 2,000 square feet of living space excluding the garage. This development is also going to provide two additional fire hydrants to serve the new addition. I would like to address Councilor Hall right now, I know that you had asked me some questions in regard to the plat, and I have those answers for you as well. These lot sizes are going to be 5,600 square feet, and that is what the next agenda item about is for the rezon to the PUD. And those setbacks are different, we are allowed to do that within the PUD. They will be on the front side 10-foot, on the side 5-foot, on the street side 10-foot, and at the rear, there'll be 10-foot as well, and that is opposed to the regular R1 setback. So, I hope that answers your questions, and I'd be happy to answer any more you have about the plat. Staff does recommend approval of the plat, and I can answer any other questions you guys may have.
Okay, we'll now close this public hearing.
I'm moved for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Rowley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stoudt.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
I abstain. Item passes. Number 13, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4269A to rezone property located on East Harris Road within section Northwest 18 Township 15 North, Range 19 East, from A1 Agricultural to a planned unit development for the Harris Village subdivision, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now in an open hearing. Ms. Winkle.
Yes, thank you. This is in regard to the same property that we just spoke about for the plat, this is the rezon. Right now, this, this area is zoned agricultural, and we are doing a planned unit development on this area so that we could adjust setbacks and lot sizes for these specific purposes. Those required findings are listed in the ordinance, so when you, when you do go to approve the ordinance, that PUD will be approved within the ordinance as well, I do want to let that be known. I can answer any questions that you may have on this property, and staff does recommend approval of ordinance 4269A.
Okay, we'll now close this public hearing.
Move for approval. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Rowley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stoudt.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
I abstain. Okay, next, we're going to table item 14 and move it after 15, so, item number 15, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of resolution number 3046, future land use amendment for the property located at 609 East Oak Mulgy Street, or take other necessary action.
We are now in an open public hearing. Ms. Winkle.
Yes, so I do apologize that the PowerPoint is not working, because I wanted to show you a little bit more detail about where this was located. This is in regard to a property at 609 West Oak Mulgy, or East Oak Mulgy, excuse me. It is right next to the Domino's, if that helps you in location at all. Right next to that is, is a house that was used for commercial purposes, it is zone C1, right now, which is the reason for the land use amendment. They are wanting now to convert that to a residential family home, and because of that, we have to amend the land use map because it does say that it is for C1 commercial. Oh, okay, so if you look at the next slide, possibly. Diana, can you go two more?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is where it's located, right off of Oak Mulgy, and if you'll go one more, please. The reason that we are proposing this is because if you look right next to the property, you've got other homes right there. This was grandfathered in a while ago, where those were zone C1 commercial originally, they had businesses out of them, but since then, they have turned into family homes and were grandfathered in. So, just to the east of that property, you see the, the homes that are next to it, and just across the street, there are businesses. But we do recommend approval on this because it does fit within the community around it.
Yeah. Okay, we'll now close this hearing.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Rowley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stoudt.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, item passes. Now, we'll go to item 14.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4270-A, a request to rezone the property located at 609 East Oak Mulgy Street from C1 Local Commercial to R1 Single Family, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Ms. Winkle?
Yes.
Oh, we're not, open public hearing now. Ms. Winkle.
Thank you. So, this is the same property, so this is the item that we are requesting the rezon on. So, we are requesting that it be rezoned from C1 Local Commercial to R1 Residential Single Family Use. I can answer any questions you have, but staff does recommend approval of ordinance 4270A.
Okay, we've got a gentleman that would like to speak to this item. John Beckler?
I'm just available for questions if you have.
No questions, okay, we'll now close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Rowley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stoudt.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, item passes. Moving on.
Discuss, consider approval of ordinance 4271-A, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article V, Boards and Commissions, Division 10, Port Authority by amending Section 2-402, Areas of Jurisdiction, and Section 2-403, General Powers, adding repealer severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance, 4271A, amends the original ordinance that we had in place. The port was given its authority in 1961 under specific ordinance, and as time has changed, we've added additional ordinances to that, amendments as necessary. This particular ordinance will extend the jurisdiction of the port authority to include any foreign trade zones in the state, therefore making it much more attractive to help stimulate the economy and the economic activity that happens at the port. Instead of limiting to the port to the county, this opens it up to the state for a federal trade zone, so it's something that's very much in the city's benefit, and I would recommend approval.
Does it cost us any more money?
No, sir.
Okay.
Before, before we get started, we have somebody to speak on this item. Mr. Gregg?
Mike Gregg, point of information mainly, how many trade zones are near Muskogee? Don't know. There are restrictions to, let's say you have a trade zone, let's say it is Muskogee, there's a radius in which that trade zone can basically bring in companies and be within a radius of 60 miles, if I remember correctly. I just did some studying, so I'm just questioning here, because I thought it was interesting, I wanted to go in and find out the details, and so that's when I found out this was about trade zones. I, I think that I didn't get time to really go in great detail about what kind of restrictions are involved with that. I know we're setting it up to change the ordinance to be able to set up this thing, but I noticed there's a general or specific trade zone that you can have. Have we decided as a group on our strategy with this? I'm always interested in strategies, I'm always interested in information, and when I don't have it, I ask questions.
Sir, that is something that the port authority is going to deal with, they're going to set that up, so they have to apply to the federal government to get the trade zone to be opened.
I'm assuming that we have a general idea of what we want to do with that.
I don't know if Jeff Underwood is here.
Yeah, no, he is, and he's here to speak to any questions anybody might have.
Okay, well, I'll.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Gregg?
If you're more than that, then you can listen, if, if, if it gets to all this asking. I'm considering, are we looking at any specific types of industries coming in? I did a little research, and I know, are we looking at trade activity, ship it out, bring it in? I know there's great advantages for this, I have no problem with it, I'm just trying to figure it out and understand a little better why we're doing what we're doing, and what the costs are going to be, and you said no cost, I, well, I challenge that situation.
Well, it's not going to cost the city any money, so there may be things that we have to pay like tariffs or something like that related to the importation of goods, that type of thing.
That thing, I understand that part. I, I looked at a guy who was a, an individual who did, is an expert, expert involved, and his point of view, and I looked at an accountant, his point of view, and I looked at Oklahoma Commerce Department, and looked at their position. There is a host of things going through, it looks like, I think in '24, I looked at the numbers, it was about seven, almost seven, 6.3 billion, I think, of money flow on this type of activity. Our nearest one we have that I'm aware of, okay, because I had that chance to suggest, is, is an older one, and that's basically down in Durant and Ardmore, you know, down Durant area, in Ardmore. And they have basically like similar to what we have, Mayor and I've had this talk, up to Dan, I've talked, a lot of people, that we've got a lot of act, a lot of things that we have that are virtually very unusual for one city. One, we have a river, a port, and we're actually an international waterway. We have one of the largest airports that ever built in Oklahoma, Sec Tinker, that's south of here, it's never been really used. As we all know about what's coming up with some of the other projects, we have the ability to have a lot of electricity, another thing they're looking for. And I'm surprised there's not a host of them in Tulsa, but I, again, I did not get a chance to go through and check that out.
Jeff.
And I'm just concerned about, what, are we targeting any particular type of business? And because there's anywhere from, I'm looking at some of the information, one caught my eye, was nuclear parts, but Oklahoma seems to be doing a lot of outsourcing for other people around the world, so to speak, which is a great thing, because I know that you can ship in a car, and a certain percent of the car's cost, you can actually finally assemble it here and avoid all those tariffs for somebody for like BMW or anybody else, even from Japan. Well, I can see there's a great advantage, but I just, I guess I'm going to have to wait till Jeff gets up and listen to him, and I know they're going to eventually have a lot more questions as time goes on. But I appreciate for the time, just want to be sure that we as a city are in our ducks in a row and not in front of the cart, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Mr. Underwood, if you would, maybe you can address a few, if not all, of Mr. Gregg's questions.
Good evening, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, specifically what I would say is that Port Muskogee is the grantee, a federal grantee for foreign trade zone number 164, which is authorized by U.S. Customs. And so, this again is very highly federally regulated when you're dealing with moving goods and trying to defer or reduce tariffs and duties for industry. Specifically, what I would tell you in this regard, and why we're here today, is the ordinance that Katrina had recognized, it's specific to Muskogee County. So, when you're talking, Mr. Gregg, about 60-mile radius, we have other industries within Muskogee County that may have warehousing outside of Muskogee County. We also have other industries that we're trying to bring into Muskogee and Muskogee County that are outside, maybe have warehousing or other locations. We actually have one right now that is going through this process to be utilized Port Muskogee's foreign trade zone, and they were before the Foreign Trade Zone Board, which is a federal board, and they said, we're sorry, in order to be able to proceed with this, you guys are going to have to go back and make this ordinance change. So, that's what really prompted us to go, we need to be able to look and make this change, it doesn't cost any more money, the burden of cost is going to be on that industry that is seeking to have the sponsorship, so they are going to incur that cost, we are just the grantee of that foreign trade zone so they can have that benefit. So, again, we have an instance right now to where we have a great company that we've been pursuing for a number of years, they've got another location, I'll say within the region, not to give anything away, they'd like to utilize right now this foreign trade zone at that location, and then ultimately, we hope that they would look to entice them to come here to Muskogee and actually have a physical presence as well. Again, all, all this is highly federally regulated, we have to follow and go before the FTZ Board for any approvals, so everything is within the bounds of the federal government to be able to utilize the foreign trade zone.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Any questions for Mr. Underwood from Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion.
Okay, I guess we take action on this item? Motion?
There is a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, and second?
There is a second.
Okay, well, I wasn't paying attention, guys. We have a motion and a second, how about we do roll call?
Mike Rowley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stoudt.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, item passes. Number 17, please.
Consider approval for the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Oklahoma Natural Gas in the amount of $366,602 for a gas line relocation on South Country Club Road, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this action is needed because we're continuing on with the South Country Club project, which, to remind you, is going to be three lanes from Chandler on Country Club to just about Mana, which is past Creek County. Will be a three-lane, we hope asphalt street, could be concrete, we'll address that during the bid process. We'll tell you that we are probably several weeks away from actually bidding this project so we can get it underway as far as the construction goes, but prior to that, we need to get this agreement in place with Oklahoma Natural Gas to relocate their gas lines that are in a private gas easement, and when they're in that private easement, then it is contingent upon the city to pay for the movement of the gas lines. So, 66% of the lines that we're going to have to relocate are in that, which is going to require the city's share to be $366,602. The total project price is looking at, right at $550,000, so ONG will cover the rest of that. This is to let the manager negotiate and sign that agreement. Again, we do think we can have this project out to bid in the next 30 days. We have had some, we've got the right-of-way purchased already, we've had Oklahoma General Electric, OGN E, has already moved their utilities, so now we need the gas moved. This will include new water and sewer for that stretch, and a five-foot sidewalk on the east side of the project itself. The only thing that we see as an obstacle in our way now is it is going to be hard to construct with the fire station and the school out there, and there's no way we can construct this road in a three-month summer break for the school, so no matter how we do it, we're going to end up during the school year having to deal with it. We intend to have meetings with the school and the fire department before this project gets underway to discuss how we're going to deter. Our intent is to keep traffic flowing two ways all the time, it might be a little narrow, but we'll figure that out, but we are ready to move forward with it. And saying all that, I'll answer, oh, and we do anticipate the project to last just about a year. This will be funded from the sales tax money, so the funding is in place. And by the way, once we get this project bid, we know what the actual amount is, we'll know what we can put toward the rest of the street improvements out of that sales tax. We're eager to get it bid, so we know that information. Saying all that, I'll answer any questions, but do recommend approval.
Any questions or comments?
Can we please try to have, see, it looks so pretty on the east side.
So, it will either be eight inches of concrete, two three-inch lifts with a two-inch top on it with asphalt, or we'll try to bid it as an add alternate with concrete and see how they stack up, so.
Well, the department has done excellent work on the north side, really, really looks good.
Construction deserves a lot of credit for that project, they've kept right on top of that, and if you've noticed, they've been on it just about every single day, even through the rains.
So they was out there in the rain getting the bridge and everything fixed, they didn't back off one minute?
And we're gonna have, we're gonna have conversations with whoever the contractor is on this part, because it's gonna be just important, probably more so, to get this project built as rapidly as possible, so.
Is this with OneGas or ONG?
This is ONG.
Okay.
Oklahoma Natural.
Because all the numbers that kind of came out of all the OneGas stuff, that's why I was just trying to figure it out. Okay, thanks.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooce.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Number 18.
Consider approval to accept a mutual police assistance agreement between the City of Muskogee and the Jack C. Montgomery Veteran Affairs Medical Center or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new agreement between the VA Hospital and the Muskogee Police Department. We do it usually every three years, and it's for mutual aid, so that our police can go out and assist with them on campus when they need to. It calls for us training together for better response times. The ability to transport people is needed to deal with any kind of shooters or other threats on the campus, and happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooce.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Number 19.
Consider approval to receive a donation of a parcel of land located at 611 Marietta Street in Muskogee, Oklahoma, from the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency or take other necessary action.
Tara Shos, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency has acquired this property through foreclosure, and they would like to donate that to the City of Muskogee for use in our land bank for future residential development, and staff does recommend approval of that donation.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooce.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Number 20, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of CBA to the Muskogee City-County Port Authority and Muskogee City-County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term beginning September 1, 2025, and ending August 31, 2028, filling the expiring term of Rowdy Fuel or take other necessary action.
Yes, this is my appointment. Mr. Abel, who has served on the council, will do a great job here. I play with his name, Abel, he's very able, very capable, and he'll be an asset to the Port Authority. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve CBA being to the port. We got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooce.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, and Dan's paws was messing with his friend, just to let everybody know. Item passes. Number 20. Okay, how about number 21?
Consider approval of the appointment of Caleb Biglow as the Ward Three Commissioner to the Urban Renewal Authority, replacing Doug Buse, to serve a three-year term beginning September 1, 2025, and expiring August 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Cranford?
Yes, this is my appointment tonight. Caleb is a young apprentice at his family's own funeral home. He is thriving in our community and looking for an opportunity to serve, and so I think that it's a great opportunity for us to get some young blood in some of these organizations and on some of these boards. So I do ask that you approve this item.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hooce.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, item passes. Next, we'll recognize citizens wishing to speak to the mayor and council. Each citizen gets three minutes, and we will start with Charles Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to make a couple announcements of some upcoming fun events that are going to be occurring in and around the city. First and foremost, it is the Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 3, 2025, which will start at noon, and of course, any member of the council is invited to, of course, be a part of one of the floats of parades, and the city and county divisions and respective divisions are invited to come represent themselves in the parade, and we look forward to having you. The parade route will be identical to last year, and we'll be, we've already talked with planning about it, and parade kickoff will be at noon, and it will start probably blocking off streets probably somewhere between 11:00 and 11:15. But this will be the standard parade procedure pretty much for the foreseeable future. So the petition for the parade will be distributed and come through various different offices over the next couple, next couple days through the next week. And just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this for the third year, and hope that we have another run at the state championship for, you know, three years in a row, and I look forward to seeing everyone there, and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford, thank you, and thank you for your work on this for the last several years.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, how about Ms. Brazil?
Yes.
And if you'll just state your name, no address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Okay, my name's Shayna Brazil, but I come in the name of Jesus Christ, who is the root of Jesse from Isaiah 11:1. He satisfies the legal line and the bloodline of that root. I'm also a branch of Jesse because my grandfather's Al Jesse, but I'm also an heir to the first fruit king from the Kingdom of Heaven, as in Matthew 6:10, on earth as it is in heaven. I need to provide public notice to you, city council. This is in accordance with the USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. It's also in pursuant of the Oklahoma preamble, which states our intent to invoke the name of our Jehovah, and which also gives us our liberty. I'm also in pursuant of Article 15, Section 1 of Oklahoma Constitution, which states your oath that you took, and Article 1, Section 1, which is the U.S. Constitution's supremacy law, where Oklahoma says that the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and in Zechariah 8, 16 through 17, where the Lord loves no false oaths, and he is our true judgment of the truth. The Constitution of the United States has the overreaching requirements that every state must follow. The states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 to the Constitution says, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment of a grand jury." However, the state of Oklahoma has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to charge by way of information, not by indictment, as in Article 2, Section 17 of the Oklahoma Constitution. That is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. One is Article 1, Section 10, where it says that no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts. So police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under a contract, a contract to perform that's based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract perimeters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. When a state enacts a law that directs their agents to disobey the law, the U.S. Constitution, that would be a violation of Article 1, Section 10. The Fourteenth Amendment is the other place where you'll find this reinforcement, and that's where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens. Tana W. Downing is fighting this in the Supreme Court. I just want to remind you that Jehovah says if you do what he asks, he will set you on high above nations and all the earth, and that the story of Jonah and the whale, you know, God will punish us if we don't, he'll even put us in a whale. So I thank you for your time, God bless.
Thank you.
And I will leave you all unnoticed.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Nina Ground.
I'm Nina D.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I printed this out again because I made a request about the fluoride in our water. I also am very happy with a lot of progress we're making, and I wanted to, I'll wait till I get my three minutes, so I don't bother to talk about it. Just about the fluoride. I'm just cleaning it up before we get in. Would you say, Mr. Reed?
Hey, how you doing, Nina? Thank you.
My question is...
Rest of the line.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am. It doesn't matter. Who cares? That's my one thing I wanted to bring to the attention of the council, if you want to run the clock. We're also in Oklahoma, the 50th state in education. We're at the very bottom. And Old Mogi has a chance to make an improvement, or Muskogee does. We need to get back to critical thinking. If we could take a look at our curriculums and see what we can do as a community to help raise our schools, because Oklahoma shouldn't be 50th in the nation. So I just wanted to bring an awareness to the fact that we aren't doing well in that category. We need more STEM programs. We need more help for teachers. We need better pay for teachers. We need to look at our education if we can't do anything else. You all probably know OGE is asking another rate increase of us. I don't think that's fair. I'm going off-grid. I'm building a small Tesla in another Edison design, which will take my house off-grid, and I can do that for anybody, but they have options because energy's all around us. So if OGE would open their mind and listen to some engineering options, it would help us with our rate and keep it back under control. I'd like to build a website that's easy for people to navigate, more like a newspaper, so I can get from your information officer and make it easier for people to engage. They get a little lost in the city site, which has a lot of information, and I love that. But we're getting more inspired. People are starting to follow their hearts instead of the old mindset, because we have good people working for us right now, and I want to get them excited about what you're doing. So if there's any objection, it'll come to the attorney's office for approval. I won't put anything up that isn't approved by your information officer as well, but I want to keep it simple, the KISS theory, to just help people understand, so that they can get more involved in schools, helping teachers, more involved with the police, more involved with emergency, just more up to date with the changes that you're making because they're good changes. And when we're putting people back in a place, it's nice to know what they've already done and what they project they can do, and we're putting people in places. We just need to know a little bit about them, although I do have a lot of respect for your choices, because they seem to be pretty good so far. These people do a good job. The other people, I've been all over the Port Authority, all that's really nice down there. So I want our people to be as excited as I'm getting. That's all I wanted to say tonight. I want to thank you all very much for working hard and being diligent and keeping an open mind, because we have a great city. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your support and enthusiasm for our community.
Very excited.
Do we have, do we have this again? Okay. Next, we need to consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, please.
A, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, consider convening an executive session to hold confidential communications between the city council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee City of versus Cephalon Incorporated, case number 12045162, DAP, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sackler family related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including possible authorization to settle claims, to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Muskogee's participation in the GESA, and approve Resolution Number 3048 or take other necessary action. B, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, consider convening an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the city council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee City of versus Cephalon Incorporated, case number 12045162, DAP, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against opioids manufacturers, Alvegan, Amneal, Apetex, Hikma, Endevir, Mylan, Sandoz, Sun, and Zytus, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including possible authorization to settle claims, to execute the subdivision participation form, and approve Resolution Number 3049 or take other necessary action. C, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, Project ED 2025-12, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim number 10-23-26, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. E, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. F, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. G, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. H, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, consider convening an executive session to review and discuss the compensation of Chad Locke as juvenile first alternate municipal judge, and if necessary, take any appropriate action in open session.
Okay, I'll entertain a question. Second. Okay, we are now in executive session. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Roll call.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Who's.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Patrick, here? Or was I here the first time?
Yeah, you were there.
Ms. Boenheimer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to be as good as Ken was at this, but let's dive in. So 22A, Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to hold confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item B, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item C, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item B, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes.
Item C, pursuant to Section 307c11, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to economic development project ED-2025-12, including a proposal to entice a business to locate in the northwestern quadrant of the city. An appropriate motion would be to approve the incentive as discussed in executive session in order to entice the business.
Still moved. Second.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item P, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes. Item C, pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25, Council did convene an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the City Council and its attorney concerning the settling of certain claims in Muskogee, City of Cellefon, Inc., et al., case number 120-op-45162-dap, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio and related litigation, including potential resolution of certain claims against Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated entities and members of the Sacker family, related lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. An appropriate motion would be to approve Resolution Number 3048 with the subdivision participation form and participate in the settlement of these cases.
Still moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes. And with that, we're adjourned.